Good evening. This ninety-third meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Members of the council, due to us being in a virtual meeting, please note that I will recognize you and then you may begin speaking. In lieu of invocation tonight, we will have a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's showcase will be delivered by Jennifer Clark with Baltimore Core. Ms. Clark, the floor is yours.
Hello. 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 There we go, ma'am. We think we can- If you can hear me-
We can hear you. We can hear you now. Go ahead. We can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay. So, thank you, President Scott. I really appreciate the time being here and, um, thank you. So, I will speak about the Elevation Awards. The Elevation Awards is a ten thousand dollar fee grant given to community leaders who are doing great work in the community. Our applications are currently open now. They are open until October thirtieth. And the Elevation Awards are used in order for community leaders to excel in a project that they're already currently working on and/or if they have an idea that would be beneficial to their community, we certainly encourage them to apply. This is open to residents who are eighteen years of age and older. They have to live in the city of Baltimore and they have to- Again, this is a ten thousand dollar fee grant given to community leaders. Their work would start in January and then it would end officially, the programming year would end in October. And currently, our current cohort is finishing up their, um, like their session with us. And right now, we have ten awards that are available to people. So, if you know of any community leaders within your districts that you think this would be beneficial to, I certainly encourage you all to have them apply. I will be sharing our information around where they could go in order to find the application and also where they could go in order to learn more information. Again, they have to be ci- city residents. They have to be at least eighteen years of age or older and they have to be people of And that's all that's from me. I could tell you about some of the work of former awardees, um, but I won't trouble you all. I'm sure you have other business to do. Oh, you're on mute.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Clark, and thank you for the great work that Baltimore Core does in our city. Thank you so much. Roll call. The clerk will now call the roll of the members.
President Scott. Present. Cohen.
President.
McCray.
Present.
Dorsey.
President.
Henry.
Here.
Schleifer.
Present.
Middleton.
Present.
Burnett.
Present.
Pinkett.
Present.
Bullock.
Present.
Reisenger.
Present.
Costello. Costello.
Present.
Stokes.
Here.
Sneed.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Mr. President, we have a call.
Thank you. We will now proceed with adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the October fifth, twenty twenty proceedings are on the council member's desk.
With file objection, the Journal will be adopted. The Journal is adopted. Executive nominations.
EA twenty dash zero two eight six, Anthony Scott, Jr., member, Board of Directors for the Parking Authority of Baltimore City, District Nine.
Uh, this has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee. A bill to be introduced.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero six three zero, Building, Fire and Related Codes, Adoption of the International Green Construction Code. For the purpose of amending the Building, Fire and Related Code article to repeal the International Green Construction Code and substitute su- subject to local additions, deletions, amendments and modifications, EA Green Construction Code and providing for the effective date construction and application of the new Green Construction Code, sponsors of City Council on behalf of the administration.
Uh, this has been assigned to Judiciary Committee. You're on mute, Mr. Clerk.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero six three one, Excise Tax, Electronic Smoking Devices. For the purpose of repealing current sub-type twenty second tobacco tax as abrogated by function of law, establishing an excise tax on the distribution of electronic smoking devices, setting the rate of the tax defined in certain terms, authorizing a direct or financed tax, uh, to issue certain regulations, providing for collection of the tax and payment of interest and penalties, providing for a special effective date. Sponsors, Scott, Clark, Middleton, Bullock.
Please add Councilman Reisenger as a co-sponsor. Uh, thank you to my co-sponsors. This, uh, bill is attempt, uh, we know earlier this term, we tried to regulate e-cigarettes and vaping. Ultimately, we were not successful. This is about building on that work and looking out for the public health of our community. Uh, if we can't ban them, we should can sure tax them and do that in a way that's in line with the rest of the state. Not to mention, uh, the COVID-nineteen fiscal hit that we have taken. We have to be thinking about how we can generate revenue as a city. Uh, this bill establishes a thirty percent tax on this process. This bill also repeals our local tobacco tax and old laws still in the books, which have since been preempted at the state level. And we know that, uh, there's been work at the state level to also do with this bill attempts across the state. Uh, thank you to my co-sponsors. And this bill's been assigned to the Taxation, Finance and Economic Development Committee. Please add Councilman Dorsey as a co-sponsor, Councilman Cohen, Councilman Pinkett as co-sponsors. This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Mr. President, can you add me as well?
Please add Councilman, uh, Councilman Burnett as a co-sponsor. Thank you to all my co-sponsors. We can move forward, Mr. Clerk.
Can I just say a quick comment, Mr. President?
Oh, yes, ma'am, and Vice President.
I just want to thank you for bringing this bill up again because I can, um, along with my, um, older, uh, colleagues, we can go all the way back to when, uh, Belinda Conway was a council person that kind of brought, started bringing light to some of this, um, th- those devices. So, thank you again for bringing, oops, important piece back to the council.
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you to all my co-sponsors. This has been, again, assigned to the Taxation, Finance and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero six three two, Property Tax Credit, Habitat for Humanity. For the purpose of granting in accordance with state tax property, Article nine dash two five two, a property tax against certain real property owned and held by Habitat for Humanity, requiring an annual report from Habitat for Humanity detailing certain information, providing for a term of the credit and requiring that the Director of Finance adopts certain regulations in order to implement and administer this property tax credit. Sponsors, Henry Clark, Middleton, Bullock.
Chair Record Notices, Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this is the second part of an effort that began at the state level. Uh, Habitat for Humanity, and I don't think I need to spend any time detailing the good work that they have done, both here in Baltimore City's neighborhoods and elsewhere across the country. Uh, they, uh, the way that their process works, they will own properties, uh, before they start working on them and once they have finished the renovation and rehabilitation of the property, they will, um, formally sell them to, uh, to their new owners who, uh, are required by Habitat's own process to, uh, have sweat equity and have actually worked on fixing up the house themselves. Uh, but during that whole time, the work is being done or during the time of development when the property is in holding, Habitat for Humanity is liable for property taxes on it. And so, what this bill does is it grants them a property tax credit, uh, while the work is being done on the house. Once the house is done and it is turned over to the new owner, the new owner will pay property taxes just like everybody else. Um, but it will help the organization, uh, do more good work if we can reduce the holding costs of these houses while they're under development. I appreciate my co-sponsors and I thank the Council Vice President for already, um, scheduling or, uh, uh, a, a, a quick hearing that she'll be announcing later today. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero six three three, City Property, Naming Bocheck Field House to be Rocky Brown Field House. For the purpose of naming the Field House then formerly known as Bocheck Field House and located at three thousand East Madison Street to be the Rocky Brown Field House, sponsors Sneed.
Please add the Council President as a co-sponsor. Uh, Chair Record Notices, Councilwoman Sneed.
Thank you, Council President. The Field House has actually been closed for about twenty years. Uh, when I first got in as a councilwoman, um, this was one of the first things that Mr. Rocky had brought to me to say, "We have to get this Field House open." So, we're coming in, we're leaving office soon and after four years, this Field House is now open. They actually had kids there during the summer with summer activities. But Mr. Rocky here, bareheaded to make sure that the, uh, children in this community had somewhere to go, that the seniors in the community have somewhere to exercise, um, and that they can hold community meetings here. And so, the neighbors just wanted to give back, to thank Mr. Rocky for all his hard work, his dedication for keeping the community clean, from, um, just advocating for the neighbors in the community, um, and making sure that, um, it, it doesn't leave, um, Bocheck Field House is, is, it's not forgotten. And so, the neighbors didn't want to forget him. So, they, uh, urged me to put in this bill to, um, honor and celebrate the man who's worked hard in the Bocheck community. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. This has been assigned to Judiciary Committee. Uh, resolutions to be introduced.
City Council Resolution twenty dash zero two five four R, The Baltimore City Aerial Research Investigation Research Program. For the purpose of, uh, for the purpose of calling, uh, police commissioners and others to report to the Baltimore City Council specific data and criteria in determining the effectiveness of the aerial research investigation research program and calling on the Board of Estimates to call a public hearing on the program prior to rendering any decision on its extension beyond October thirty-first, two thousand twenty. Sponsors, Clark, Middleton, Henry, Bullock, Burnett.
Chair Record Notices, Councilwoman-
Thank you very much. Uh, can you hear me, Mr. President, members of council? Okay. Um, thank you for, uh, to my co-sponsors. I really appreciate it. Um, I have spent a lot of this, uh, summer, uh, fall, um, getting, receiving complaints from residents in a variety of neighborhoods across the Fourteenth District about the, the noise and the constant presence of, um, what we, we call, um, spy planes, but are better known as airplanes, um, which are part of a program that was introduced and launched in April of this year, uh, and had a half, halftime date of October thirty-first, two thousand twenty to decide whether a pilot should go forward, not, and, or not. And, uh, I don't want that date to pass without some kind of, of decision by the Board of Estimates, um, about the program because I have a lot of constituents who would like to be heard on the subject. Uh, the, Mr. President, thank you for, um, suggesting that we send this to a committee, Public Safety, uh, chaired by Councilman Schleifer, uh, to be heard. And I thank you for that. Also, this resolution calls for a report directly to the City Council, which that would cover very well, and we hope to have that report at that hearing. Um, but I also would like to have the Board of Estimates make a decision so that my constituents and everyone across Baltimore will know what to expect up in the sky, uh, for the next six months. Thank you for your attention and co-sponsorship, and I hope you'll be part of, that you and your constituents will join in when we have the hearing, uh, in Public Safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, committee reports. We will now move the bills from, uh, Chair Record Notices, Councilwoman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we read short titles for the remainder of the hearing.
With file objection, short titles will be read for the remainder of the hearing. Short titles will be read for the remainder of the hearing. Uh, Labor Commission.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero six two seven, Baltimore City Fire Department, Reporting Requirements.
Uh, Chair Record Notices, Councilwoman Sneed.
Thank you, Council President. The bill came out of committee on October fifteenth, two thousand twenty. Um, I was the sponsor of the bill. The committee approved the bill as favorable with amendments. Um, the amendments were sent to council members electronically earlier today. I move the, uh, committee amendment.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Uh, amendments are approved. Chair Record Notices, Councilwoman Sneed.
Thank you, Council President. The bill came out of committee on October fifteenth, two thousand twenty. Um, I was the sponsor of the bill. The committee approved the bill as favorable with amendments. Um, the amendments were sent to council members as well. I move the committee amendment.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion is, amendments are approved. Chair Record Notices, Councilwoman Sneed.
I move the bill favorably as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five nine one, Zoning, Conditional to Parking, One Fifteen and One Eighteen.
Chair Record Notices, Councilman Rod.
Yeah, Mr. President, uh, I move the finding of facts.
With file objection, the finding of facts is approved. Finding of facts are approved. Chair Record Notices, Councilman Rod.
Mr. President, there's no amendments. I move the bill favorable.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five nine one, Zoning, Conditional to Parking, One Fifteen and One Eighteen.
Chair Record Notices, Councilman Rod.
Yeah, Mr. President, uh, I move the finding of facts.
With file objection, the finding of facts is approved. Finding of facts are approved. Chair Record Notices, Councilman Rod.
Mr. President, there's no amendments. I move the bill favorable.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero four four zero, Acquisition of Property, Temporary Construction Evements and Permanent Evements.
Chair Record Notices, Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this bill came out of committee on October fifteenth, two thousand twenty, and the sponsor, again, was the Council President on behalf of the administration. The committee approved the bill as favorable. I move the bill as favorable.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero six zero five, Minority and Women's Business Utilization Emergencies.
Chair Record Notices, Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill came out of committee on October fifteenth, two thousand twenty, and again, uh, the sponsor, Council President on behalf of the administration. Uh, the committee approved the bill as favorable with amendments. The amendments were sent to council members electronically. I move the committee amendments. There is a, oh, I, are we going to move that first? I move the committee amendments.
All those in favor of approving this amendment say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero six zero five, Minority and Women's Business Utilization Emergencies.
Chair Record Notices, Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill came out of committee on October fifteenth, two thousand twenty, and again, uh, the sponsor, Council President on behalf of the administration. Uh, the committee approved the bill as favorable with amendments. The amendments were sent to council members as well. I move the committee amendment.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero six three three, City Property, Naming Pavilion and the Nature Park of the Joseph H. Rasch Playfield to the BG Pavilion and the BG Nature Park. Uh, Mr. President, I move to suspend ten-two and-
Third Reader. Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero three six four, sale of property. Former part of a variable width alley located between two ten-foot alleys bounded by Boom Street, East Twenty-second Street, Green or Avenue, and East Twenty-third Street.
Chair recognizes Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill came out of committee on October fifteenth, twenty twenty. Uh, the council president, on behalf of the administration, was the sponsor. The committee approved the bill as favorable. I move the bill as favorable.
All those in favor approving this bill say aye?
Aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four four zero, acquisition of property, temporary construction easements and permanent easements.
Chair recognizes Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this bill came out of committee on October fifteenth, twenty twenty, and the sponsor, again, was the council president, on behalf of the administration. The committee approved the bill as favorable. I move the bill as favorable.
All those in favor approving this bill say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero six zero five, minority and women's business utilization emergencies.
Chair recognizes Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill came out of committee on October fifteenth, twenty twenty. And again, uh, the sponsor, council president, on behalf of the administration. Uh, the committee approved the bill as favorable with amendments. The amendments were sent to council members electronically. I move the committee amendments. There is a, oh, are we gonna move that first? I move the committee amendments.
All those in favor of approving the amendment say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion is approved. Uh, Chair recognizes Vice President Middleton.
There is a floor amendment. Uh, at this time, I would like to yield to Councilman Burnett the, um, for this floor amendment.
Uh, thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, and Vice President Middleton, by members of the committee for hearing the bill. Um, uh, I would like to make a motion to, uh, introduce an amendment from the floor. The council should have received that in their inbox earlier today. Uh, after having, uh, dialogue with the mayor's office and the finance department about the implementation date, uh, as, uh, introduced, which was, uh, thirty days. Uh, I would like to introduce, uh, an amendment to extend that out. Uh, and that would, uh, push it to, uh, ninety, ninety days, uh, implementation period.
All right. Uh, Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
I move the bill favorable as amended.
Well, no, we have to, someone has to move the amendment.
Oh, okay. We need a vote.
I think I moved it, Mr. President. I think I need a second.
I can't, there you go. All those in favor of approving this amendment say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion is approved. Amendment is approved. Chair recognizes Vice President Middleton.
I move the bill favorable as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say nay. Motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Uh, third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four three one, towing licensing regulations. President Scott. Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Rosenger. Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
Please note, Councilman Pinkett has a no. This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero four nine six, record management, modernizing, correcting, and conforming. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Rosenger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five three seven, sale of property, thirty-two hundred East Biddle Street. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Rosenger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five seven one, planned unit development, Village of Cross Keys. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Rosenger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five eight seven, Perkins Somerset Old Town Development District. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Rosenger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five eight eight, Perkins Somerset Old Town Bond issuance. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Rosenger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five eight nine, Perkins Somerset Old Town Special Taxing District. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Rosenger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty, twenty dash zero five nine three, tax sales, properties exempt from sale. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Rosenger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
Please note, Councilman Schleifer has a no. This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five nine six, supplementary general fund operating appropriation. Department of General Services, two point five million dollars. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Rosenger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five nine seven, supplementary general fund oper- operating appropriation, fire department, eleven million dollars. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Rosenger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five nine eight, supplementary general fund operating appropriation, health department, five point five million. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Rosenger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five nine nine, supplementary general fund operating appropriation. Department of Housing and Community Development, sixty million dollars. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Rosenger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero six zero zero, general fund operating appropriation transfer. Department of Transportation Service, six ninety-two, Police Department Service, six twenty-two, two million dollars. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey.
No.
Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Rosenger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
Please note, Councilman Dorsey has a no. This bill is approved. Uh, committee announcements. Members, when you hear your committee, please proceed with your announcement. If you have two committees, you can do both at the same time. We will start today, budget and appropriations, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Councilman Clark.
Mr. President.
I'm sorry, everybody. I need to vote, I want to vote against, um, twenty dash six hundred. I did, I, I have before, and I somehow it just passed me by.
All right. Please note, uh, that Councilman Clark, uh, votes no on, uh, twenty dash oh six hundred, general fund operating appropriation transfer. Uh, that's two no's. The bill is approved. Uh, Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Budget Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, November twenty-fourth at five P M. It will be a virtual WebEx meeting on legislative oversight, LO nineteen dash zero zero six zero. This is a budget oversight hearing for the Baltimore City Police Department. Uh, I move to suspend Rule ten-two to announce a hearing.
Without objection, uh, we will suspend the rules of the Councilment Commission for Hearing.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Judiciary Committee will hold the hearing on Tuesday, October twenty-seventh, uh, at ten A M. On the twenty dash zero six two eight, city property, naming Pavilion in the Nature Park and the Joseph H. Rasch Playfield. It's the BG Pavilion and the BG Nature Park. Mr. President, I hope to suspend ten-two and to announce a hearing.
Without objection, uh, we will suspend the rules and allow the councilmen to announce the hearing. The rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Judiciary Committee will hold a virtual WebEx hearing on Tuesday, October twenty-seventh at ten oh five A M. This is for Council Bill twenty dash zero six three zero. Building, Fire, and Related Codes, adoption of International Green Construction Code, two thousand and eighteen. Uh, and finally, uh, Mr. President, if I may make a non-hearing hearing announcement. Um, uh, council members, uh, Sneed and Henry. Uh, I will get your, your two bills and Judiciary Committee announced at the, uh, next council meeting. Uh, so let's just coordinate before then. Councilman Henry, I'm sorry I missed your call today. And Councilwoman Sneed will have to figure out what planning commission is so we can move forward with yours. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Education Youth Committee, Councilman Cohen. Councilman Cohen, you're good.
Uh, sir, um, Mr. President, could I also vote no? Apologies, I was trying to get off mute on the previous bill that my colleagues, Councilman Dorsey and Clark, voted no on.
Please note, uh, Councilman Cohen's a no on twenty dash oh six zero zero.
Thank you, sir. Uh, the Education and Youth Committee will hold a hearing, a legislative oversight hearing on restorative practices in Baltimore City public schools. That will be Thursday, November twelfth at five P M, virtually. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, Equity Instructor, Councilman Henry.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Just a reminder that the Equity Instructor Committee will settle all family business on Friday, October thirtieth. At ten A M, we will be having a, uh, work session slash voting session for all the remaining old charter amendments that are in committee. And, um, they've all been introduced individually, but this is just a reminder for the folks at home. If, uh, if, if you're still interested in discussing charter amendments and changes to the charter, uh, they won't be going into effect anytime soon, no matter what happens at that date. But, um, we will be, um, having one final bit of discussion under this council, um, for all of these different charter amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. The Executive Appointments Committee, Councilman Stokes.
I have no announcement, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. Health Committee, Councilman Burnett.
I don't, I don't have any announcements, uh, Mr. President.
Thank you. Housing and Urban Affairs, Councilman Bullock.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Have two, uh, announcements. Uh, the first is for City Council Bill two zero zero six two five. We'll be having a hearing on Tuesday, November tenth at three P M, and that is for ordinance, landlord tenant, right to counsel, and eviction cases. That will then be followed at three thirty P M for a voting session for City Council Bill two zero zero five nine two, ordinance office to end homelessness establishment administration, permanent housing voucher program. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, Labor Committee, Councilwoman Sneed.
Thank you. The Labor Committee will actually hold a hearing, um, for Bill nineteen dash zero four eight one on Thursday, November the twelfth at one P M. Uh, the hearing is in reference to banning discrimination based on hair, texture, and protective hairstyles, um, for the purpose of prohibiting discrimination based on hair texture and protective hairstyles. Thank you.
Thanks too. Land Use Committee.
Mr. President, uh, the Land Use Committee will hold a hearing on Monday, November ninth at one twenty P M on Bill twenty dash zero six two four. It's the Baltimore City Critical Area Management Program. It's conforming certain provisions to, uh, new state mandates. It'll also hold a hearing Wednesday, December second at one P M on Bill twenty dash zero five five six. This is a rezoning at twenty eighty-seven Drew Park Drive. Uh, this hearing is being, being rescheduled from October twenty-first. Also, Wednesday, December second at one ten P M on Bill twenty dash zero six two zero. This is a plan to develop an amendment to Green, uh, West Arts Entertainment District. Also, this hearing is being rescheduled from October twenty-ninth. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. Uh, Public Safety Committee, Councilman Sykes.
Hey, Mr. President. The Public Safety Committee will hold a hearing on, um, L- LO nineteen dash zero zero five nine, uh, monthly crime stats for the police department, and we will begin that at five oh one P M. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee, Council Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have, uh, four here, uh, bills to hear. Um, I'd like to suspend the rules, uh, ten-two.
Without objection, we will suspend the rules so that the Council Vice President can announce a hearing.
Thank you. The Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee will hear Bill number two zero dash oh six oh three, Thursday, October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, um, virtually, and that's the retirement savings plan, uh, clarification. Also, I would like to suspend, uh, rules ten-two to announce a hearing.
Without objection, we will suspend the rules so that the Council Vice President can announce the hearing. The rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you. Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee will hear Bill number two zero dash oh six oh four, Thursday, October twenty-ninth, um, at ten oh three A M, virtually, and it's the retirement savings plan, minor child clarification. Um, I would like to suspend rules ten-two and ten-three to announce a hearing.
Uh, without objection, uh, we will, uh, suspend the rules so that the Council President can announce the hearing. The rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you. The Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee will hear Bill number two zero dash oh six three two, Thursday, October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, at ten oh four A M, and it's the property tax credit for Habitat for Humanity. And I would also, um, like to suspend the rules ten-two and ten-three to announce a hearing.
Without objection, we will suspend the rules so that the Council Vice President can announce a hearing. This bill is suspended. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee will hear Bill number two zero dash oh six three one, Thursday, November twelfth, at, uh, ten oh two A M, virtually, and it's the excise, uh, excise tax, electronic smoking devices.
Good. Thank you, Vice President. Uh, we're gonna go back to the Public Safety Committee, Councilman Sykes.
Hey, Mr. President. The Public Safety Committee is gonna hold a legislative oversight hearing on Council Bill nineteen dash zero zero five nine on November twenty-fourth, uh, twenty twenty at five oh one P M for the monthly crime stats of the police department. Thank you.
Thank you. Transportation Committee, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I don't have a green ticket prepared for this. Uh, I'm not sure if I have to ask for the waiving of a rule or anything, but, uh, I'd like to announce a hearing for, um, Bill number twenty dash oh five five eight, commuting benefits for Wednesday, October twenty-eighth at three P M, the regularly scheduled time for the Transportation Committee.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much. Uh, regular announcement. I will start, uh, by wishing, uh, Councilman Cohen and his lovely wife congratulations for welcoming baby Elias into the world, so the councilman is now a father of two. Uh, so we know that the councilman, once, uh, city hall is open, we know that my office is always open for babies every hour, as you know. Uh, I, Councilwoman Sneed and Councilman Bullock have utilized my services over the years. Uh, also, want to, uh, wish a early birthday to both Councilman Pinkett and Councilwoman McCray, who both have, uh, birthdays coming up, so want to wish them an e- early birthday. I also would like to ask that the Council Vice President honor a moment of silence for the now two hundred and sixty-four, um, members, uh, of our city that we've lost to gun violence, all of those that we've lost to COVID-nineteen, and all those that we continue to lose to overdose epidemic in Baltimore as well. Uh, councilmembers, I would also like to, uh, ask for a moment of silence for, um, Mr. William Glenn Miller. Uh, Mr. William Glenn Miller Senior was a harm reduction advocate who worked with Baltimore Harm Reduction Coalition. Uh, he was sixty-five years old. He did work at, uh, thankless most of the time, but changed the lives of so many. And also Betty Garmon Robinson, a SNCC organizer, civil rights activist, mentor to many and friend to many. I think that we all know, uh, the great work that, that Betty Robinson did in Baltimore City. She always stood up for us right and never backed down to a challenge. Uh, councilmembers, also, uh, today is actually the twentieth time we've met in a virtual forum. So, it's been twenty city council meetings since, since we've been in, in the chambers with us all, and I've been lonely in here by myself. But, I would like to highlight, as many of you have seen, uh, my office put out some information today outlining the steps that the council has taken to modernize itself. We often get caught up in the big picture, neglecting to recognize the folks who, uh, put the work in, uh, to make that happen. I want to mo- take this moment to recognize a true, uh, council pioneer. While COVID has forced our hand in modernizing how we do things, Natwana Austin has spent her entire career at the council laying the groundwork. We would not be here today without her innovative work and her devotion to Baltimore and the city, this city council. She's helped the city council go paperless and it's unprecedented in a way that puts the public and the press in a position to get real-time updates about what we're doing. It's been an honor and privilege to work with her to make city government more accessible and transparent for all of our citizens. And in her own words, I'm gonna quote this, I wrote this down. Did we just achieve the ultimate government transparency plan? You bet we did. I'm excited that because of her, uh, my office is able to leave behind a legacy of a more modern and accessible way of governing our city, and just wanted to say thank you, Natwana, before I pass it on to the rest of the council. Regular announcement, uh, I will, I'm gonna go in the order on, uh, my screen. Council Vice President, I will come to you last. Let me come to you last. Yes, ma'am. Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, well, first of all, thank you for already asking for a moment of silence for Betty Robinson. I had the honor and privilege of working with her at C P H A, um, uh, back in the nineties when she was only about halfway through a lifetime's work of, uh, really trying to make the world a better place. Um, but I also would like to ask Council Vice President for a moment of silence, uh, for Willa Terman. Uh, Willa Terman is a longtime resident of Cameron Village here in the fourth district. Uh, she was integral in, um, taking care of Chikapin Park, uh, for many years. She's, uh, I would describe her as, um, sometimes the president of the association, but always the leader of the association. Um, and between her work with Cameron Village and N E C O, um, she's been a stalwart, uh, member of making the fourth district better for a long time, and, um, and we will miss her. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for Oscar Brilliant, uh, longtime partner of our former colleague, Councilwoman Ricky Specter.
Thank you. Uh, regular announcement, Councilwoman Clark. Oh?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you go on mute, Councilwoman Clark.
Oh, I'm, I'm okay. You know, it says mute when you're on, but when you're off, it says unmute, which is like a double negative. It's very confusing for us, for me. Uh, okay, so mute means I'm on, and I'd like to, uh, add to the list. Well, first of all, let me say about Betty Robinson, that she, most recently, was the great bringer together of all the diverse and, and excellent vote, voices of people who live overlooking Lake Montebello and all have opinions about how the traffic should be, how the signs should be posted, and what it is, how hard it is to live in the center of a citywide wonderful attraction. She, as a resident there, managed to work with all kinds of the residents to come to consensus about a number of things that they wanted. And we are still working to deliver the goods on that, but we do so now in Betty's memory because she's the one who got us to consensus, and she always has. Even with the most, uh, difficult issues, she waits and works until we finally find a way, a pathway. Thank you. Oh, and Bill Miller, um, who was a very active person here in our district and in North Baltimore for many, many years. If you would add him to the list too as well, please. A fine gentleman.
Thank you. And Councilman, I just wanna also add, thank you, you know, to our cleanup show on Saturday.
Oh, yeah!
Here without.
Great job!
Six minutes cleanup, and wanted to say thank you for, for, uh, coming out and intending to help and, uh, Councilman Bullock.
Well, thank you. It was a pleasure.
Councilman, you're good? All right, Councilman Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, for those dads out there, uh, like Mr. Bullock, having two is a whole trip. Uh, my wife and I have been playing some man-to-man defense, um, trying to keep up, but, uh, appreciate all my colleagues', um, and their support. Um, it is exhausting round two, but it is an amazing blessing, and pandemic babies are the best. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Stop there. Don't play zone. Don't fall for it.
Thank you, thank you. Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just, I just wanna echo everything that's been said, particularly about Betty Robinson. Um, Betty's, uh, Betty's a neighbor of mine, uh, two blocks from me. Um, and when my mu- when my now-wife, uh, who I'll mention again in a moment, uh, moved from Baltimore County into Baltimore City, she lived directly behind Betty's house, um, when we first began dating. So, that was, um, I've had the privilege of seeing Betty, not just in, um, the activists and advocacy circles, but as a neighbor, uh, and, and as a friend, and as a friend to neighbors. And, um, you know, my, our first conversation was her kind of, um, giving me a, a serious grilling in twenty sixteen, when I was running for this position, um, in her, uh, in her living room, but what she did in the, um, uh, approachable organizer fashion, um, that, that she had in all respects in her life over a nice cup of tea. Um, and, and the next time I saw her was in Annapolis, um, when we were taking a, a bus together, uh, with, um, the Campaign for Justice Jobs and, and, uh, Justice Saving Jobs down to Annapolis to, um, advocate for, uh, repeal or reform of the Law Enforcement Officers Bill of Rights, as we are still fighting for today. Um, and so I hope that we'll continue, uh, the legacy of her work, uh, especially in that arena, um, in the coming year especially. Um, and, uh, the last thing I'll say is that it was a real privilege, um, in the beginning of this term, when, uh, Senator Carter, uh, asked if I had any recommendations for who from the northeast district should be serving on the civilian review board. Um, I could've, I could've said, yeah, I definitely want somebody from the third city council district to be serving on there. Um, I wanna, you know, uh, advocate for a constituent of mine in my district, but there was really nobody I could, um, think better to serve on the. So, it was a real privilege to recommend her, um, and to see her, uh, join that board. Um, so, you know, Betty will be missed by many, uh, in many ways. Um, finally, just, uh, the last thing I wanted to say is that, uh, I, I, I mentioned this, um, kinda, uh, counting my chickens before they were hatched at our last council meeting two weeks ago, but I just wanted to update everybody that a week ago, we actually did make it to my first wedding anniversary. My wife has, um, uh, has tolerated me in marriage for now a, a year and a week. Um, and I just wanna thank her for that. She's, um, out of earshot at the moment, but I'll make sure that she knows that I said this later on. Uh, I hope that you will make sure that she knows that I said this later on. Uh, I continue to be the lucky one in this relationship. Uh, thank you, Mr. Council President.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else? If not, uh, Council Vice President Middleton.
So, I, I, um, before we move on, I want to, I do know, um, since the last council meeting, we had another, um, explosion that happened in the Park Lane community of, uh, Central Park Heights, and I just wanna thank, uh, all of our first responders and for the city and a number of nonprofits that reached out, the police department, the fire department, um, the housing department, the Red Cross, um, uh, Edgecombe Circle Elementary School. I mean, I could go, Park Heights Renaissance, um, the Park Lane community residents themselves, um, the faith-based community came together. I mean, it's, it's a continual outpouring of love, and, uh, things are still being taken, uh, at, uh, Edgecombe Circle Elementary School. Thank God there has been no fatalities, but there are a couple of people that are gonna be in the hospital, uh, for a while because of severe burns. Um, there also were two pets that were found, and, uh, Barks is kind of holding them, and, um, um, I found someone that's going to, uh, take care of one of those pets until the person comes out, you know, the hospital. Um, also, you know, there have been students that have lost, um, you know, um, their laptops and so on, and people are just, it, the love has just been so good, and it's so good to see that we still have that caring and protection and help that Baltimore is noted for in, in our city. And, uh, Council President, uh, I wanna thank you for all your help, also the mayor's office. If I left out anyone, uh, please forgive me, but it, it's just been a continual, um, this has just really been a devastating thing. It's kind of like one of the first real, real serious things that, like this, that has happened within my district, and I think, um, learning through this, it's, it's so important in having organization. And, um, uh, there have been people in the mayor's office that because of their, it just shows how, you do need experience and wisdom, uh, in times like this because you're also passing along, uh, ideas and processes, and it's, it's, um, important to have that. So, I can't say enough and thank, and, uh, and speaking for the community and also for these families that are still trying to, uh, put the pieces together. Um, hold on because we are con- gonna continue to help you. On that note, um, the next council meeting of the city council will be held on Monday.
Mr. President, I just.
Oh, um, the.
Sorry, Council, Council Vice President, hold on, one second. Uh, Councilman Stokes?
Thank you. I wanna just give a moment of silence for Mrs. Ida Robinson, who has done some great thing. I'm sorry, Ida Hopkins, who does some great things here in Baltimore City, working with nonprofits, working with communities, and her, her work in this Baltimore City is long-lasting. So, thank you.
That's Ida Hopkins.
Yes, ma'am. Chair recognizes.
Thank you. Thank you. So, the next meeting of the city council will be held on Monday, November second, twenty twenty, at five P M. And may we have a moment of silence for, we have a, a nice little list here, um, William Glenn Bill Miller Senior, Betty Garmon Robinson, um, Oscar Brilliant, uh, longtime boyfriend of former council member Ricky Spector, uh, Willa Terman, Ida Hopkins, the two hundred, the now two hundred and sixty-four, um, victims and families, um, that are suffering through, uh, homicide, and also our continued opioid epidemic, and also our, uh, COVID pan- pandemic. And may we continue to wear our masks, social distance, and, uh, be careful when you do go out to space yourself and, uh, try to stay out in that clear air if you have to socialize. Thank you.
There being no further business, uh, this concludes the ninety-third meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council.